Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, April the first, on 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received shall be read into the record. We'll begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Chavera, followed by the invocation from Pastor Sean Piper. If you'll join us, please.
It is an absolute honor to show some allegiance to our country. Right hand over heart. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in this month that we remember the death of your son on the cross, we also remember his resurrection. And we thank you for the reality of hope. Lord, help us to be able to see and discern things for as they are. But because of hope, we don't have to accept things merely as they are, but we can look forward to something better. Lord, help us to see things through the eyes of hope and help us to not merely accept what is, but to look to what can be. I pray for unity in our country. I pray for our parts as citizens that we would do the best thing we can to work toward that and to be civil with one another. We thank you for those that run toward danger to keep us safe, for the firemen, for the policemen, for the EMTs and the first responders. And we ask, Lord, that you would bless them in their efforts. And we pray all these things in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Sean. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Chavera.
Here. Right, first item on this evening's agenda is a proclamation. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Ask Mayor Pro Tem Bryant to read that for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to issue this proclamation, to read this proclamation on behalf of the city council of the city of TAF, declaring the National Public Safety Telecommunication Week for April 13th through April 19th, 2025. Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was founded to honor telecommunications personnel dedicating their lives to public safety. It was a local initiative that was initially set up in 1981 by Patricia Anderson of Contra Costa County, which later went on to become a nationwide week-long event. And whereas National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is celebrated each year during the second full week of April to coincide with the National 911 Education Month. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone 911. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job over the years. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of TAF recognizes and extends its appreciation to our dedicated and skilled dispatchers and hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of TAF this first day of April, 2025, and signed by the five council members.
I'd like to say something real quick about my dispatchers. Shannon, Yahira, Tanya, Daryl, and Stacy. These women run our brain of our facility over there. Without them, nothing functions properly. Prior to me getting here, we had an incident where we had to take somebody into custody. And if it wasn't for Daryl, who was running dispatch and giving us the correct directions and descriptions and areas to set up a perimeter, it would never work out. And I'm just letting you know that, just to touch on what Councilman Josh said exactly. They do run our show, and they're a vital part of everything we do. And without them, we wouldn't be able to function correctly, that's for sure.
No doubt, critical part of the team.
I'm not very afraid, but I'm here to accept it on their behalf.
All right.
Get what you get.
They also play a vital role in the public relations aspect of your department, if I'm not mistaken, Chief.
They absolutely do.
I mean, they're the first voice that somebody hears in the event, you know, of a 911 call or some of the service calls. So they are the first people, you know, that represent your department that speak to the customer, so, critical role.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the good thing about that, to give them the kudos for what they do, calmly, coolly, when everything else is in frantic mode, get the information extracted from whoever's calling and be able to pass that information off to the radio, to the officer, so when responding, we know where to go, what level of danger we're entering, the directions, everything about it. So it's fascinating that they can get all that information calculated in their head, put it on, and they're typing this all into a computer at the same time they're giving this information out, but be able to relay that to the officers that are responding and that are already on scene. It's incredible, it really is.
Well, be sure and relay the gratitude of the entire city council. We know what a critical component they are, and we sincerely appreciate their efforts.
Thank you very much, and I will absolutely do that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, second item on the agenda. We have none. Citizens request public comments. We have none this evening, so we'll roll right into council statements, non-action. So Councilman Chavera, let's begin with you, sir.
Thank you, sir. You know, I believe that one of the most important part of our meetings is prayer. So Pastor Sean, I should do appreciate you coming out and praying over us because we understand that we definitely need help from above. But what's interesting about his prayer to me was, is that he mentions that it's so important for our cities, our citizens, to come together and work in unity to help to do the right things for our community. And as I was listening to that, I was also thinking about what some of our local students did recently. And they went to the state capitol for some advocacy to express their concerns about not only education, but our local economy and to learn how our state operates, which is a wonderful thing. My concern is, is that some adults don't understand this and that we need to do our due diligence to better understand how our government works at the state level and even at the federal level. And I also would express and encourage our community, or anyone who's interested, that you also attend the state's meeting and express your concerns about our local economy and anything that may concern you due to the fact that we are taxpayers. And we need these legislators to understand that they need to hear our voice. So similarly to what our students did, coupling it with the power of prayer, again, I would encourage those who are interested in advocacy, not only for our community, our state, and our county, go attend these state meetings and go talk to our legislators. Again, we live in democracy, majority prevails, and we need the majority to go assist in sharing and expressing concerns. And that's it, sir.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a major announcement nobody don't know about it on this day. My paperwork, it's all been turned in, got the signatures. As of this moment, for this poor state of California, I announce my candidacy for the governor of California. I will promise to make sure there is no more taxes on gas, kill the high-speed rail, bring oil back into California again, and have prosperity. So I ask for your vote and your support for my new venture.
Okay, that's a new adventure, all right.
Everybody knows it's April Fool, so.
We're gonna whoop it when we leave tonight.
Well, at least you announced that with April.
I was proud.
Before you asked for the check.
He deserves it. Oh, boy.
That's all I have.
All right, well, that's enough.
He got it, he got us.
Okay, Councilman Waldrop.
I have no comment, thank you. I can't follow that. Dirty rat.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really hard to say much beyond what Councilmember Chavera mentioned, besides ditto, right? Government by its very nature is fallible and imperfect. And the further you trickle up the ladder, the more imperfect it gets from the lens of the local lens, right? It's there for a reason, because it can take care of things and handle things at a larger scale that we just can't hear. So it's almost like a necessary evil. But I think back to my poli sci class with Dr. Pease 20, 25 years ago. He quoted some, one of our founding fathers, said, "Government at the local level is government at its best." And after spending the week in Sacramento with some of those kids and with other peers, I can tell you right now that's 100% true, right? When you look up at what folks are doing up there, I'm not saying that they have ill intent, but I can say that they're misguided to some degree or ill-informed. I'll even give them that benefit of the doubt, right? I don't think that's absolutely the truth, but I'll at least offer that olive branch, right? But the most important thing to remember is that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I mean that with every part of my being. Even if it's a letter of support or in opposition to something, send it. They're accepting it via email, they're accepting it, you know, you can hand-deliver it or send it to Pony Express if you want. But get engaged. Because at the end of the day, if somebody makes a proposal and they don't get any negative feedback and it's crap for everybody, you're just as guilty as the people that voted for it. And vice versa. If you're pushing through a piece of legislation that's no good for the whole, then you know what? You're just as guilty as anybody else. Just get engaged, because again, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chavera, I appreciate it very much. I will mention, on the 12th of March, we did meet in Wasco for the West Kern Economic Alliance via the Kern Economic Development Corporation. We had our second meeting. We're learning some of the ropes about what our roles are and what we're trying to do in that group. I'm hoping that it'll become more of a working group where maybe we focus on a region or an industry or even a city and say, okay, how can we help troubleshoot what's going on and set you guys up for some success in the future? Early on, it's been, hey, this is what's happening to us in our cities or what we're, you know, some of the big projects, which I think is great. How'd you do it? Why'd you do it? How can we replicate it? You know, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, but maybe that wheel doesn't fit for TAF. How can I make it a different wheel? So I appreciate KEDC for putting that on, and I look forward to kind of help steering how that group morphs in the future to help it be beneficial specifically here on the west side. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Myself and our city manager Craig Jones attended kind of a restart of a meeting that's going to take place in Bakersfield, I believe. And that is the city manager and mayor's meeting, where city managers and mayors from all the cities within Kern County get together and we discuss things that are taking place, whether it's legislation coming down from Sacramento, it's issues that we have that we can either learn from one another about how they dealt with it in their cities or we deal with it in ours. The guest speaker was our district attorney, Cynthia Zimmer. And Cindy discussed with all of us the result of the ballot measure that was Prop 36. And what it means and the opportunity that it presents to finally get people who live on the street, who are engaged in the use of drugs and alcohol to the detriment of themselves as well as the community, repeat offenders for crimes against property and petty theft. And basically, the process that needs to take place, how many times they have to be arrested for this before they can finally spend time behind bars, get clean, get help, and hopefully break that cycle that continues to happen right now. But it's a big deal, it's an opportunity. I do believe, and Chief, I won't put words in your mouth, that there's going to be training for our officers so they better understand what it means and the way and the processes we have to go through in order to best work with the district attorney's office so we get these people off the street, okay? The voters have spoken, the state of California, the governor spoke against this proposition, yet it passed by almost 70% in the state of California. People, voters, law-abiding citizens are tired of being victims of the same criminals and the same crimes, and they have spoken. So we had a really good meeting there, as well as spoke with some of the other city managers and mayors regarding other opportunities to actually get together and move things forward. So that was a very beneficial meeting, and there'll be follow-ups to that. And I really enjoyed hearing from our district attorney about the process. Another meeting that took place, I had a meeting with the second district supervisor this morning, as a matter of fact. I had sent him a text congratulating him on a newsletter that he sent out. You think about the second district, how large it is and how many different things it encompasses. And so he had a newsletter to inform people throughout the second district of what he had been doing and his team. City manager, myself, and our staff has met with them multiple times about things on the west side that need to be addressed. And that's the first step in solving a problem, is helping identify the problem. So we had a great meeting, and I sent him an email regarding his newsletter. And he sent me a text back, said, hey, I'm gonna be at Joe's at nine o'clock for breakfast. Can you meet me there? And so I did. I met with him and his staff, and we talked about some of the other issues that we can work together on, understanding that the fact is, I'm the mayor of the city of TAF proper, just as we all represent the city of TAF proper. And yet, we do truly understand that the west side as a whole is a community, okay? And we all have a standard of living that will impact each other. So I just want to give him a shout-out for saying, yeah, hey, come on, I'm gonna be back over there, let's sit down and have breakfast, let's talk some more. So I am glad to say that as representative of the second district and of the west side, that he is out and about, and he's moving and making a difference. And we are discussing more and more possibilities. There's a very positive feel about things, whether it's coming from Washington DC and the policies coming down from there or the coalescing of local governments. So it's very important, like Councilman Chavera was talking about. This is your government, it's the people's government. You know, we serve the people, and we're honored to have the opportunity to do that, but this is people's government. And I feel better about the momentum of where things are going than I have in a very long time. So I just want to fill everybody in on that. That is all I have this evening. Next up, we have item number four, planning commission reports. I don't think we have a planning commissioner. Item number five, department reports. Yes, sir, all right. Police chief's gonna address the council.
Kudos, kudos, Churchill, that was funny. That was funny. I'm gonna give the statistics for the month of March for the police department. We had total incidents of 1,180 this month, or from the month of March. Calls for service of 369. Officer-initiated incidents of 701. Here's my favorite, where you get to the vehicle and vehicle ped stops. We had 43 traffic stops out of the 88 stops that we had going. And to me, that's critical if you want to find where the dope guns and anything else that might be. It's usually in a vehicle traveling in and out or coming through our city. And those are the ones that are, to me, are what we must stop and what we must deal with. Total officer cases of 148. Total misdemeanor and felony arrests of 71. We had 51 misdemeanor arrests and, of course, the felony arrests of 20. So I just wanted to pass that on. I do want to touch on what the mayor spoke about with Cynthia Zimmer and, or the DA Cynthia Zimmer and her team. I actually sat next to, which was Monday, one of their retired DAs. And I had spoke with Randall, and his name is Randall Meyer, he's the deputy chief or the chief for their investigators. And he is assisting us in that training. And it's a lost art, and it's something that we had a good conversation about. And the older cops understand that the consequences of using drugs and how to spot them and how to use them, it's kind of a lost art. Because Proposition 47 and 57 kind of took away everything that dealt with that. And unless you're just finding possession of somebody, possession of narcotics, it's just a lost art to be able to spot it from looking at eyes and the mannerisms that they do. So we're actually retraining our younger cops in that area and giving them a lot of direction in that. Some of them do have those abilities, but some, it's kind of like I said, it's a lost art going through the academy because it's not taught like it used to be. And we are gonna work hard on that because that is a key component of Prop 36. It actually is. So we will be utilizing that to our benefit to put the criminals where they belong.
Excellent, it will be nice. It will benefit the community, obviously, but hopefully, at some point in time, it also benefits the criminal and they can get their life straight. At least for a while, there'll be someplace where they won't be able to victimize the hard-working, honest people of the city of TAF.
Absolutely. And how you touched on that, where, because I believe that the individuals that are using narcotics and having those issues, they do want to come clean at times. They do want to become a productive part of society, most of them do. To kind of give you guys a little backstory, it's a quick story. Before I came here, I worked for the sheriff's department, and of course, I worked in the chapter, where we arrested a lot of the drug charges. And that was back in the day when possession, under the influence, it was all, there was a crime, and you were taken to jail. I arrested a young man several times, I'm not gonna bring up his name. But the last time I actually arrested him, it was pretty hairy, jumped out of a window, we chased, took him into custody. And while I was driving him to the jail, I pulled over and I just told him I was gonna pray for him. And we prayed together. And of course, and I heard that he got arrested a few more times after that. But now, you know, moved forward almost 20 years, and now I'm the chief of the city of TAF. I get a phone call, and it gets dispatched. Our dispatch tells me that there's a phone call, and I pick it up in the squad room. And I pick it up, and it's this young man. And it's kind of heart-wrenching. He said, are you Chief McMinn? And I said, yes, sir, I am. He said, I don't know if you remember, he told me his name, and I said, absolutely, I remember you. He goes, I remember you arrested me and you prayed with me on the side of the road one time. He goes, I just wanted to tell you, he goes, yes, I faltered a few times after that, but because of what you said and kind of guided me in that, and I believe it's the Lord that kind of gives us all direction, and that's my belief. But he said, I've changed my life, I'm an electrician, I'm a union electrician, I have a wife, I have two children, I have moved on. And I mean, this kid was going down a path that was no recovery. And because of the Lord and because of law enforcement intervening in his life, made a change.
That's a wonderful thing. Just imagine if we could affect that kind of change on the majority of those out there.
Absolutely. I pray for it all the time.
All right, well, thank you very much, and thank your team for us. All right, next up, item number six, city manager statements. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing further.
All right. Item number seven, Jason, city attorney statement. Okay. Item number eight, future agenda requests. Anybody this evening?
I have none here.
No fundraisers for your run for governor? All right, that brings us to the consent calendar, items nine through 13. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Having surveyed the crowd and seeing none, those items are: Item number nine, the minutes from the March 18th, 2025 meeting. Item number 10, the payment of bills, some $71,000 worth of bills. Item number 11, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number 21 for February of 2025. Recommendation is to receive and file the monthly report for February 2025 from Kern County Fire Station Number 21 and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item number 12, is cancellation of the April 15th, 2025 city council meeting due to lack of a quorum. Recommendation is a motion to approve the cancellation of the April 15th, 2025 city council meeting if there is a lack of a quorum and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item number 13, street closures for the 2025 Chamber of Commerce Car Show. Spring must be right around the corner. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Authorizing the Street Closures for the 2025 Chamber of Commerce Car Show" and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items nine through 13.
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavera.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that's approved on a 5-0 vote. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And believe it or not, that brings the open portion of this city council meeting to a close. This council will be going into closed session for item A, conference with- This council will be going into closed session for: Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one undisclosed case, Government Code Section 54956.9b; Item B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9a, Taft Union High School versus the City of Taft; and lastly, item C, conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, Government Code Section 54956.8, 410 Supply Row, Taft, California. I want to thank you all for being a part of this evening's meeting. Be safe, look forward to seeing you next time.